Everybody ready? Good evening, Farmington Hills, and welcome to the October 28th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. We will call the meeting to order, and we begin meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Leading us this evening are Stephen and Alan Fent, who are members of the Fent family that is celebrating 100 years of Fent Builders Supply, founded in 1924 and contributed to the civic and economic heritage of the community for 100 years and is therefore a centennial business. So please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
And we have a proclamation for you.
Want me to come up?
Oh, I can come down.
Thank you very much.
You guys want you want you come on over here a little?
Hundred years, this is a big deal.
All right, guys.
Come on up.
Counsel.
Are we standing? Sure, okay. I'm moving in now.
Make sure you get them all in.
You got us all? You just go. Thank you. Best wishes. Oh, we appreciate you. Did you want to say a few words about your business or 100 years of a journey? Have at. After after 100 years, I think you deserve you deserve a minute or two.
So I'll give you the short the short history. So my grandfather, his name was Leo Fent. Lionel was his first name, that was a nickname. So he had a farm and a residence on Gil Road between Eight, Nine Mile where we are at where we're at now. And west of where the plant is now, he had a farm, and he had farm animals, sheeps, pigs, he had produce. He used to go to the, I know my dad, who was Junior Fent, his oldest son, he had a, like I said, he had a farm, and he would take his produce down to the eastern market. He would he would leave about at midnight with a team of horses and a carriage and go down to the eastern market to be there at 6:00 a.m. to sell his produce. But he also had some sand and gravel on the property, which he had a manually operated device that segregated the sand from the gravel, and he sold it to some of the local contractors nearby in Farmington. And one of the contractors got behind on paying him, and some time went by, so this this customer of his was was making concrete blocks on a on an old hand-operated machine. And so Grandpa traded the machine for his debt, and since he had the sand and gravel, he started making concrete blocks by hand. That's how really the business got started, which was right around 1924. And he had two sons, Roger and Junior Fent. Junior was my father, Junior, my dad was the oldest. And after my dad got back from the service in Germany, was a First Lieutenant in the Army in Germany, and when he came home in the early 50s, he came into the business. And my uncle, Roger, operated, we had also ready-mixed concrete at the plant. So he did the ready-mixed concrete, and my father took the block business. I got involved in the 1970s. I went to Lawrence Tech and worked while I was going to school. And 1973, we bought a plant in Ann Arbor, Michigan. It's actually where we make all our paving stones and some retaining wall block. And to carry things on, Stephen is my youngest son, I have another son, Matthew, and a daughter, Nikki, and one more daughter that's in Ohio, Samantha, she's not involved in the business. So the fourth generation is going to help take over the business.
That's really spectacular. It's uncommon for a particularly family business to make it to a fourth generation. You've definitely done something right.
So the original family is still owned owned and operating the business.
Well, thank you so much. And we have approval next of, oh, sorry, roll call.
Councilmembers Aldred.
Here.
Boloware.
Here.
Bridges.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Dwyer.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
And Mayor Rich.
Here.
Thank you. Now we have approval of the regular session meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion.
Please.
Madam Mayor, I move the council approve the agenda as published.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. We have motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries, and we have two proclamations. The first one is recognizing October 28th, 2024 as National First Responders Day. Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, National First Responders Day, October 28th, 2024, whereas first responders, including dispatchers, firefighters, paramedics, police officers, public work professionals, and other emergency personnel, stand on the front lines selfishly serving and protecting the Farmington Hills community in time of crisis. And whereas first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accident, medical emergencies, or threat to the public health and safety. And whereas first responders answer the call to duty where it arises without hesitation, entirely gives their time and energy and humanitarian effort by making themselves available every hour of the day, every day of the year. And whereas it is the public's interest for the community members and civic leaders in Farmington Hills to learn about and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public safety and public works. And whereas year 2024 marks the sixth annual National First Responders Day, sponsored by bipartisan resolution in the U.S. Senate and House. Now, therefore, I, Teresa Rich, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2024, as National First Responders Day. I urge all citizens to join in activities, events, and ceremonies paying tribute to the first responders to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and advancing the quality of life. And I thank you for that. And for presentations, I have a presentation to make to Chief King, Chief Anru, and Jacob Russlaw.
As long as Jacob's up taking pictures, come on up, folks.
Oh, we should go over there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Come on over here.
Sorry.
No, no, it's all good.
We should be centered. I'll go on the other side, so we're here. I'll come on here, so we're like, yeah, we're centers behind that, otherwise we look a little far.
Otherwise, we're going to look a little far.
We're on one side, they're on the other. Wait, Dwyer, hold on.
I'm the oldest person. I'm right here.
One, two, three, one more, another more. Okay, thank you. Beautiful.
Thank you. All right. And remarks from our chiefs or our? Nope. Any remarks? Jacob?
Lead us or?
Well, on behalf of the men and women of the Farmington Hills Fire Department, I thank you very much for this honor in recognizing us, and I appreciate it.
I'd echo those comments for the 134 first responders in our building, both officers, command officers, and dispatchers. On behalf of all those men and women, I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Department of Public Services and Department of Public Works, appreciate the recognition, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say that it was a great honor to make the presentations tonight to the line chiefs of the Police and Fire and DPW.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you doing it, and we definitely appreciate their work. Next is a proclamation recognizing November 1st, 2024 as Extra Mile Day. Ms. Noel?
Whereas the City of Farmington Hills acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the City of Farmington Hills encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions to society by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the City of Farmington Hills chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift off lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the City of Farmington Hills acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create more than 550 extra mile cities in our country and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now, therefore, Teresa Rich, Mayor of the Farming, of Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024 to be Extra Mile Day and urges all members of the community to not only go the extra mile in their own lives, but also to acknowledge individuals who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place.
Thank you. And Clerk Lindell, could you please introduce our acceptees this evening?
Yes, we have some wonderful members from our Committee to Increase Voter Participation, Dennis Hubbard, Karen Bartos, and Dr. Patricia Coleman Burns, and they were going to say a couple things.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Dennis Hubbard. I'm the chairperson of the Committee to Increase Voter Participation. With me are Patricia Coleman Burns and Karen Bartos, also members of the same committee. And we're here as a group of volunteers to work and improve voter turnout in all elections and to help keep voters well informed. In Farmington Hills, nearly 450 volunteers are working to support the 2024 general election, which couldn't happen without those volunteers. We're accepting this proclamation on behalf of all of those volunteers who go the extra mile for our community. For anyone who has yet to vote in this election, there are multiple options for those voters. Early voting is underway at the Caustic Activity Center through Sunday, November 3rd. This experience is similar to Election Day, but on a date and time that's convenient for your schedule. Or voters can submit an application to request an absent voter voter ballot be mailed to them. The deadline to mail a ballot, though, is Friday, November 1st at 5:00 p.m. Voters can also pick up absent voter ballot person in person at the city clerk's office. The deadline to pick up a ballot in person is Monday, November 4th at 4:00 p.m., and the ballots must be returned by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. Finally, voters can go to their usual precinct on Election Day, Tuesday, November 5th, to vote in person. Election Day is your last chance to vote in this general election, which includes voting for our next president in addition to a number of state and local offices and proposals. Thanks again for recognizing the important role volunteers play in elections within our Farmington Hills. Thank you.
Come on up. And Paul has his camera out. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you the only one speaking, or can we hear from the other committee? Okay. All right. That was my assumption, but I just want to make sure. Okay. Do we have everybody here? All right. Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Well, thank you. Next up, announcements, presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials. And I see the Emergency Preparedness Commission is with us this evening. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members and guests, my name is John Chertel, and I'm here on behalf of the Farmington Farmington Hills Emergency Preparedness Commission tonight to give you the tip of the month for October. As you know, we as the commission plan to bring a safety tip every month to the every second city council meeting in the month and present topics related to emergency preparedness for the citizens and business business owners within the community. This month's topic is fire safety. In the month of October, many fire departments around the country celebrate Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is typically held at the beginning of October in remembrance of the Great Chicago Fire in 1871 that destroyed nearly 17,500 buildings over three and a half miles, equating to over $220 million at the time, which equates to $5.7 billion in today's dollars. Each year, the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, provides fire departments and the public with a safety message. This year's safety message is smoke alarms make them work for you. Every home should have a working smoke alarm. They're a low-cost, lifesaving device that could provide an early warning in case of a fire. You should have a smoke alarm in every bedroom, outside every sleeping area, and at least one per floor of your home. With the holiday season approaching, the top three day, top three days of a year for having a fire are Christmas Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve. Please take the time to ensure that your smoke alarms are working properly. To test your smoke alarms, just press the test button on each alarm in the home. This testing should be done monthly, and all smoke alarms, including hard-wired alarms, should be replaced at the end of every 10 years. Many newer alarms now have sealed lithium ion batteries that last 10 years, so no more changing batteries when you change the clocks. In addition, as we're entering into colder months, something else to consider is the installation of combination smoke and carbon dioxide alarms, or at least having a standalone carbon dioxide alarm in your home. Locations recommended are similar to that of smoke alarms, to wear one on every floor of your house and in the areas of your sleeping areas. Carbon dioxide is a colorless and odorless gas, often referred to as the silent killer, and can occur when fuel-burning appliances such as furnaces, heaters, or generators are not working or venting properly. Breathing in carbon dioxide level at levels at high levels can be fatal, and lower levels over a long period of time can have severe negative health effects to individuals. If you have questions regarding smoke or carbon dioxide alarms, you can contact the Fire Prevention Division here at City of Farmington Hills. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. That then takes us to correspondence. Anyone have correspondence they would like to share? Okay, I have two items that I would like to share. I received a notice of it November 4th through the 10th being Himalayan Samarpun Meditation Week, and so sharing that that has come forward, as well as it is this week, the 101st anniversary of celebration of the Republic of Turkey. And so that has been, those have been received by residents. That then takes us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the city council and will be typically enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. And reading the consent agenda is our mayor pro tem, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item five, recommended adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of capital improvement bonds for the purpose of financing capital improvement fund projects and notice to intent to issue bonds, CMR 1024108. Item six, acknowledgement of the fourth and first quarter financial summary reports and quarterly investment report. Item seven, recommend approval of award of purchase of a fire engine to Rosenbauer America in the amount of $1,052,820, CMR 1024109. Item eight, recommend approval of a consultant for the Grand River Corridor Market Study to Gibbs Planning Group in the amount of $85,000. This is CMR 1024110. Item nine, recommend approval of city council study session meeting minutes of October 14th, 2024. And item 10, recommend approval of city council regular session meeting minutes of of October 14th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Noel, did you want to make a motion?
Yes. I will make a motion to approve items five through eight on the consent agenda as read by the mayor pro tem.
Okay, we have motion and support. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Aldred.
Yes.
Boloware.
Yes.
Bridges.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dwyer.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Mayor Rich.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion for items nine and 10? Yeah, Ms. Boloware?
Yes. I make a motion to approve consent agenda items nine and 10 as read by the mayor pro tem.
That's moved and supported. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Noel.
Usain.
Dwyer.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Bridges.
Yes.
Boloware.
Yes.
Aldred.
Yes.
Mayor Rich.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And this then takes us to council member comments and announcements. Anyone have something they'd like to share?
Well, I do.
Please.
I like to give thanks to the our public safety for putting on the trunk or treat on a last Saturday. It was a huge event. I've never seen that many children out with costumes, and I like to thank our police department, I believe, who put that on. It was a great, just a great event. So thanks for making that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Thank you. The council, known to public, know I attended the recent council on aging meeting, and of course it followed our study session we had at the Caustic Center recently. We had a lot of people show up at that meeting, as you guys already know, but they were on the impression they were able to have an opportunity to speak, but as you know, study sessions are not intended to have public comment. But there's a lot of interest, of course, in the topic that we talked about there, and they, there is, you know, I think that the city has taken steps to help reduce anxiety regarding some potential closing of the Caustic Center, which is not going to happen at all. I talked to city manager about this, and he's already taken steps to make sure the public's clearly aware of the fact that Caustic Center is going to remain open. And they just want an opportunity, the public just want an opportunity to communicate their interests and questions concerned regarding the future of the Caustic Center. And I talked to the mayor about this, city manager about this as well, and they have already agreed there's going to be opportunities for the public to communicate their interests and the questions concerned regarding the future of the Caustic Center. Lastly, is that they will be having, the council on aging will be having a listening session. They will reach out to the the users of the facility to just to get their 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 feedback on the Caustic Center. Also, they want the council members to participate in activities, go to a program. So city manager, if we can basically get a list of programs that they that the council members may want to observe or participate in as an opportunity to get them to see what some of the program we have at the Caustic Center, because that's one of the the suggestion that they had was to urge council to get involved and maybe visit some of these programs that they have at the Caustic Center. Basically, that's it. So thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And we do have the Veterans Day event coming up two weeks from today.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? I have a couple items to share. It is Chamber of Commerce gala season, apparently. So recently, the Caldian Chamber held its business luncheon. The Association of Chinese Americans had their gala. The American Arab Chamber of Commerce had their event last Friday, and our own Greater Farmington Area Chamber of Commerce had simply a beautiful event last Thursday that many of us attended. And congratulations to all the individuals and businesses that were recognized. For more information, please take a look at the chamber's website. And also would like to acknowledge the trunk or treat. That was such a great event. We had a blast. I dressed up like the mayor from Paw Patrol and gave out little future voter stickers, so thank you, Clerk, for that. And of course, candy, or, you know, I'd have been egged. But but it was just a lovely event, and I I know I gave out at least 600 stickers. So so great job to FHPD and everybody who supported. We had a lot of volunteers there. It was a lot of fun. And then Saturday evening, had the opportunity to attend an event at the Hawk. It was the first of its kind, or the first event for this group, the Detroit Community Choir, and I will tell you what, they raised the roof. What incredible sound. And they were just so impressed with our facility and talked about how they had a tour of the Hawk and what a great place it was. They had people acknowledge, is this your first time at the Hawk? And and told them, you need to come back, there's just so much great things happening here. So really, really wonderful event, and congrats to all of our Farmington Hills team. We just have so many things of goodness going on in this community, and, you know, we would have this meeting go on for another hour if we shared it all, but really appreciate what's going on in the city and by our city team. And that then takes us, there's your segue, Mr. City Manager, for for your update.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So just to piggyback on what council member Bridges dove into was the feedback from folks at our last study session at the Caustic Center, largely the the 50 and better crowd. There was, there is a YouTube video that has been posted on the city website under Special Services, I believe might even be on the homepage, that talks about what the thought is from the city as it relates to Caustic Center. The Caustic Center is not going away anytime soon. There were some rumors going around that it was closing as of December 31st of 2024. Nothing could be further from the truth. There will be plenty of opportunity for our residents to participate in public input and public participation as it relates to our Special Services Department and the Caustic Center specifically, and the future of senior services in that building or in potentially other buildings as as the project proceeds. Let's see, what else do I have here? Also wanted to let everybody know that I know everybody loves the roundabout on Orchard Lake Road up in our shopping district between 12 and 13 Mile Road, and that's why we're going to landscape it. And so that project is going to be starting tentatively this week, so I would expect that there'll probably be some sort of traffic control and probably some congestion up in that area where all our contractors work in that particular area. That project is expected to take three to four weeks. And I want to say congratulations to our attorney, Mr. Joppick, since you don't get an opportunity to. So Steve Joppick's firm, RSJA Law, was recognized by the Michigan Lawyers Weekly as a 2024 Best Women-led Law Firm Honoree, and that's a pretty big honor for our law firms. Way to go. Steve. Way to go, Steve. I also want to say thank you to Carly and the, and the crew in the clerk's office. They are exhausted yet resilient, and they will continue to be so until the election is over. I would like to make the comment to all that are listening that it is highly likely that we will not have final results or any kind of results the night of the election, and just asking for everybody's patience as it relates to that. And then lastly, at the council meeting, last, last council meeting, there was a request for a follow-up information on the anti-Semitic flyers that were tossed about, tossed around town a few days, a few weeks ago. I'd like to ask Chief King to perhaps come up and just give a brief update on their investigatory efforts.
Thank you, city manager. Madam Mayor, council. On that morning of October, I want to say 6th, the 5th into the 6th, as you well know, we responded to what, what ended up being the distribution of over 200 plastic packets of, of material that were, that was very vile and anti-Semitic. It was, we were one of three Oakland County jurisdictions that had that event occur overnight in the darkness, overnight hours. What I can tell you with all confidence is that no agency that had experienced it, that situation that night, or since then, responded the way Farmington Hills Police Department did. Immediately upon receiving word that that happened, we deployed a detective sergeant and six detectives to canvass the entire area. We collected over 200, I want to say 240 packages of material. This material had a paper flyer on it, and inside that plastic bag was a weighted material. They used various weighted materials that included pebbles, sand, corn, beans, and a pallet for a charcoal grill or a Traeger grill. We collected and preserved each and every packet that we found. The Farmington Hills Police Department then, after I directed a coordinated meeting with West Bloomfield, Commerce Township, Rochester Hills, Rochester, Waterford, White Lake Township, and our Oakland County Prosecutor's Office to meet at Farmington Hills Police Department to review any kind of leads, any kind of investigative, investigatory information, to share that and present that to the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office in the interest of trying to push that investigation forward. Since that day, the numerous other cities, both in Wayne and Oakland County, have been, suffered that same kind of event in the following days and the following weekends. At this time, we have sent items away to the lab. We have exhausted our, our flock system, trying to identify the individuals that are responsible for it. We did issue a press release that day. We were very careful in our press release, wanting to accomplish two, two primary goals. One was to let our Jewish community know that we supported them and we were going to do whatever it took to, to support them and protect them. And two, we wanted to let, I wanted to let the individuals that were responsible for this, who we knew roughly who, who was responsible for guiding maybe the action, but not responsible for the actual distribution in our community, was a, or a group that had ties to Georgia. We had some communications with that, that organization, where they threatened to sue me and sue the organization, sue the city, et cetera, for First Amendment-protected activities. What I can tell you right now is, is that there's been no effort that we haven't taken. We have not, we have, we have utilized every available resource at both a local, state, and federal level. We've coordinated with county sheriff's office, other agencies, Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, our local prosecutor. We've, I have personally spoke with the supervisor, supervisor agent in charge of the FBI. I've also spoke with the Assistant U.S. Attorney for the area, and at this time, pending, without additional information or evidence, we are unable to prosecute someone at this time. Now, this investigation will remain open. It will remain active, and we will do anything that we can to identify this. But what, we are going to be measured in our response. We are going to be appropriate in our response. We're not going to break any constitutional laws, and we are not going to allow this vile group to have any kind of a larger platform than they already have created. If we can use a local, state, or federal crime to prosecute and continue this investigation, we will. That is the summary of what I, what we have done. Again, I want to say there's not an agency that's involved in this that has done as much as Farmington Hills, and we are, we believe what we did was right and just. We've taken it as far, at this time, pending more information and identification of a suspect, and we will if we, we get additional information. But at this time, there's not anything pending to do in this investigation. And if there's questions, I would be happy to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Counsel? Mr. Aldrin?
I'd like to make the comment. I really appreciate that thorough explanation of all the steps that you have taken with your department, and appreciate the, the effort to go to the, to the, to the absolute end of what can be done and, and still retain within the constitutional bounds of, of what is the right thing in terms of fair and impartial policing. So I thank you for that, and I particularly thank you for that very detailed explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for, for the work that you've done and the department has done, and the coordination that you've done with the other agencies. The materials that were distributed are absolutely disgusting. My understanding, just so the community knows, is that households did not seem to be targeted based on any particular demographic. It was just the whole neighborhood was blanketed. Is that correct?
This was a mass distribution of anti-Semitic material that unfortunately complied with much of the local, state, and federal law.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
This completes my report. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. We have one item of new business, and as that item comes forward, our next item will be public comment. If anyone here wishes to submit public comment, our protocol is to please submit a blue slip. Blue slips are available at the back of the room, and they should be submitted to the clerk. And so this takes us to item four, new business, consideration of authorizing the event participation agreement for the 2024 My Career Quest Southeast to be held November 19th, 2024. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The My Career Quest Southeast is an event that's held annually in Novi that provides high school students, counselors, and teachers with a better understanding of some in-demand career options available in our region. The goal is to provide a talent pipeline for area, for area employers with in-demand skilled trade-type jobs. The occupations showcased at the event include four different career quadrants. Those are advanced manufacturing, construction, health sciences, and technology. Over 7,000 students representing over 100 different schools in Oakland, McComb, Wayne, Livingston, Washtenaw counties have all been meeting and working with professionals on their interactive displays for this event. The city's DPW has participated in, in the past, over the last few years in this program, and again, are planning to do so this year. The agreement before you allows us to participate in this community event with our equipment and staff. So it's our recommendation that city council would authorize the city manager to sign the event participation agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, Ms. Noll?
I'm familiar with this event. It's a very good event. I'm very glad to see that we're participating in it. So I am happy to make a motion to consider authorizing the event participation agreement for the 2024 Michigan Career Fest Southeast to be held on November 19th, 2024, CMR 10-24-107.
Motion, and we-
Support.
And we have support. Any comments or questions? Thank you. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There are no additions to the agenda. Are there any slips for public comment?
Do not have it.
Okay. There being no items of public comment, there being no further items on the agenda. We are adjourned. Good evening, Farmington Hills. We'll see you November 11th. Please remember to vote.